We're going to go ahead and get started. Again, my name is Steve Tashara. I'm the Director of Government Relations for Chamber. With me this evening is Mike Glover, the Chamber CEO, and Stacy Ellison, the Chamber Director of Memberships, Events, and Programs, AKA Everything Additional. So we're glad you joined us this evening and we're pleased to have the candidates with us. And so we'll talk a little bit about the format. So first, we're going to have Charlotte Hales. Again, she is running for the District 2 seat, but she's unopposed, but does appreciate the opportunity to tell you a little bit about herself for people who don't know her. We also here so far this evening have incumbent Wes Rice, who's running for reelection in District 4, which is the seat that includes the Tahoe area. And we have candidate Natalie Yanis with us this evening and hoping that Janet Murphy, also a candidate, will appear. So what we're going to do is we're going to, Mike and I, are going to ask the candidates some questions. And then when we finish that, we'll invite some audience questions. People here in the room can write a question down on a card out front. Or if you're on the Zoom with us, you can put it in the chat and we'll relay your question to the candidates. So pretty straightforward. We did our work here at the Chamber in terms of the questions that we're going to ask by talking with people in the community, talking with people throughout the county, actually. And of course, I did attend the Candidates Forum put on last week by the Business Council of Douglas County. We listened to what the candidates had to say. And we follow things in Douglas County pretty thoroughly here at the Chamber. So we have quite a bit of background on the issues that we'll discuss this evening. However, first, as I mentioned, we want to welcome Charlotte Hales. Some of you may know Charlotte from her 12 years of service on the Douglas County School Board. She had pretty early on announced that she would run for District 2. For a while, she had an opponent and then she didn't. So she will actually take her seat as a County Commissioner next January. But again, many of you don't know Charlotte, particularly if you didn't have school-aged children. And so we wanted to provide Charlotte with this opportunity with us this evening to tell us a little bit about herself and her plans when she becomes a County Commissioner. So welcome, Charlotte.
Thank you. I'm really happy to have this opportunity to let you get to know a little bit about me and how I am thinking on matters of County Commission business. I thought I'd start with some guiding principles and then share with you some urgent concerns and some Tahoe-specific things that are on my mind. So for me, I want commissioners who lead with strength and not fear. We sometimes hear fear. We hear fear of running out of water or fear of growth or fear of other things. And you know, if you're leading with strength, you don't need to be afraid. And that just comes from knowledge, preparation, critical thinking, collaboration. When you engage in those processes, you can lead with strength. That's one of my guiding principles. Here are a few more. We have a lot of advisory boards, particularly here at the lake. You have a lot of GIDs. And those folks are closest to the work and they do good work. And I believe in paying good attention to what they do and supporting them, unless there's a compelling reason not to. I respect value, welcome input from constituents, from everyone. I understand that there's been a discontinuation of the practice of having meetings at the lake. And I think that sometimes it's appropriate to do that. And there may be appropriate times to have a meeting in the South County. And you know, taking the work closest to the people, I think is a good idea, when we can do it. I believe in following the master plan without amendment and following the ordinances without variance, unless there's some truly exceptional, extraordinary circumstance where the county will be much better off with an unforeseen change. So those are some of my guiding principles. I have two urgent concerns. The first one is, you know, the big issue item in Carson Valley is keeping our environment rural. I don't know how much talk that gets at the lake, but it's a big concern in the valley. And my thinking is, the real honest way to stay rural is to buy conservation easements. You have these farmers who, they're not going to conscript them to keep farming their land forever. They have a right to have economic viability. And if we want to stay rural, we don't get that for free. So I would be in favor, if the voters support it, of a quarter cent sales tax, as has been proposed in the past. And what that would mean at the lake, I understand, is potential use for trails and for more bike paths and things of that nature. So that's one of my urgent concerns. And the other I want to mention is workforce housing, which is a real problem. It's a problem in the valley. It's a problem here at the lake. It's a problem that's not easily solved. And that doesn't mean we shouldn't take it on and try and do something with it. What I would like to see is a task force, really knowledgeable, committed people, to really look at what can be done. Of course, the county can't solve the workforce problem, workforce housing problem, but it can do a few things that might make it done. And I would like to see that happen. So specific concerns to Tahoe. I have several people who have helped me understand a little bit more about the current events, current issues, current topics in Tahoe, and I appreciate those people. For me, as I consider these matters, I think there's an overarching concern, and that is a balance between the competing interests of tourism and recreation business and residents and locals. And those are not necessarily in conflict, but sometimes they are. And so as a commissioner, I want to hear about which each of those, what the interests are on both those sides. I want to hear from residents, what's important to them, as well as business and tourism entities. So specifically, we have the VHRs and of course, we'll be refining that work. We have the Event Center, which is huge. And I think it's beautiful. I think it's exciting. I want to see it succeed and I will do what I can to that end. The micro-transit efforts, same. I know that Barton has purchased property near here and that's an exciting development. And I can't wait to see how those plans unfold. And then also Kale Drive project is on my radar, something I'm interested in and want to learn more about. So those are some of the things on my mind about the lake. I am humble here because I know there's a lot for me to learn. And so I welcome calls and emails and I look forward to learning more. And I'm committed to being a good commissioner for all parts of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. And thank you for stepping up to run for County Commissioner. It's an important part of our lives here to have good people on the Commission and we appreciate your service in the past at the School Board as well. So thank you for being there.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to transition and bring our two candidates up. Again, we have Wes Rice, incumbent in District 4, and Natalie Yanis, challenger. Not sure what happened to candidate Murphy, but we're going to proceed. If she happens to join us, that'd be great, but the show must go on. So the first thing we're going to do is allow each candidate two minutes to make an opening statement, tell you a little bit about why they're running, what some of their goals are. And again, that's going to be two minutes. And we'll start with candidate Yanis. And you'll see that Stacy here will hold up to 1 minute and 30 seconds. But you're all pretty practiced at timing things. So we want to give you enough time to express yourself. So Natalie.
Well, thank you for that and thanks for hosting us as well. So my name is Natalie Yanis. I have been a 20-year-plus resident of the State Line area. I relocated from Colorado and I've been on the KGID Board, which is Kingsbury General Perpetual District for 12 years. I've been turned out of that position, so I am looking for a bigger seat. So I'm challenging my opponent here, Wes, for his seat at the County Commission. But I've been preparing for this for a number of years. So I've been very involved in the community. I'm very community-minded. I've been on a number of boards, including serving with Mr. Tashara on the Lake Tahoe Advisory Committee. Also, I'm on the Lake Tahoe Board, as well as the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities and a plethora of other stakeholder and community organizations. So there is no lack of community-mindedness when it comes to where I'm coming from for running for this position. So I feel like I've prepared myself fairly well. I understand land use issues. I understand what's going on with county level. I think that the County Commissioners are probably tired of hearing from me the letters that I send in. So over the years, I have been very vocal on behalf of my constituents in the Kingsbury General Perpetual District area. And I would like to continue that on for all of Douglas County. I'm running on a campaign of one county because I grew up in an agricultural area and I do understand that we have an agricultural area here that is right next to a resort area. And there is some conflicting, I guess we need some more leadership is what I'm saying at the county level and trying to get those stakeholders together in that group. Oh, I think we have someone joining us. Sorry.
Keep going.
So what I was saying was basically having...
Oh, welcome. I am so sorry.
That's all right.
I was getting ready to leave, but the leak came in. Anyway, I had to give her a jump on our car. She was in my parking lot and then the dog got out. I am so sorry.
We'll come to you in a minute.
Okay. So going back to what I was saying. So I do understand an agricultural area, an extra resort area. And I think that that was what attracts me living in this area in the first place. And I feel like I could bring some leadership to this county.
Thank you. Just to bring candidate Murphy to the opening statements.
Oh, okay.
So Stacy Yanis just had her two minutes. We're going to go to Mr. Rice and then to you.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
Sir.
Your opening statement.
I will try to get this on in two minutes. My wife and I moved here 31 years ago. And this was our go-to place always. We absolutely fell in love with the valley and the lake. I spent 28 years with the past in the police department. I joined at the age of 19 as a cadet. Did my career there. I retired as a deputy lieutenant in the detective section. Moved up here to Lake Tahoe and ended up on the Sheriff's Department as a reserve. About halfway through the Reserve Academy, they called me into the office and asked me if I wanted to be a real deputy. And having been a real cop for most of my life, I dumped it to chance. So I challenged post and I got my post certificate for the state of Nevada. And I worked the patrol bond on Lake Tahoe for 15 years. And after that, I moved over to the constable's office and finished my career there, which I had to retire from or resign when I got elected as a County Commissioner. So I've been in the public sector all of my life. Did a stint in the Navy and returned from that. I really enjoy what I've been doing. I am an asset to the county. I have been told that I am the voice of common reason on the Board. And I try to maintain that. And I try to always look at all sides of the question of the actual decision on something. I also am concerned about keeping our rural character. And that can be done. And workforce housing is also something I've been criticized because I am for workforce housing and trying to figure out how to make it more affordable to live in Douglas County. Douglas County seems to be turning into a retirement community that's forcing the young people who were born and raised here and went to school to come back as professionals to the county that they grew up in and that stood wrong. So I have been working ever since I was elected to try to somehow get more workforce housing. And I look forward to working with Charlotte to get that taken care of, having another voice on the Board. It would be very, very helpful. I believe my two minutes is up.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Candidate Murphy, your two minutes, opening statement.
Well, first, I want to apologize once again. I am so sorry. Things happen over there at my office sometimes that are, I can't, you know, we're steering on the highway. But I first want to say thank you for everybody showing up and for the Chamber for putting this on and anybody else that's watching out there. Just to talk about myself a little bit. We're third generation here in Douglas County and also in South Lake. My parents retired and died in Jackson Valley is where they built their home many decades ago. I lived in Roundville. I lived down the street from Commissioner Rice. I ran the Tahoe-Douglas District as Utility District for sewage and drainage for the last 30 years. So I dedicated my life to public service in my career. Of course, majority to the township. I was also an advisor to the legislatures for 12 years, which is six terms. And I represented the GIDs, the fire departments, towns, libraries, the smaller districts in the state of Nevada. And I've changed some laws to keep the money in the smaller entities that exist in these rural areas. Douglas County, there was towns also in Clark County. So the monies that they receive, they wanted to reallocate it, but I made sure that the small government stayed close to home and that they saw the dollars work in their own backyard. I'm running for County Commissioner because I have different cues. I'm sure you all heard me voice my opinion. I really don't care about VHRs. And I'm sure that will be a question that will be brought up. I'm not into urban sprawl because everybody escaped from that to come here and have a quality of life. But I'm a extreme conservative. That's all I can tell you and my track record speaks for itself. And I would advise you, the problem, I believe, is the people like the illusion of perfection rather than the rawness of reality. And I'm a realist. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Appreciate it. So we're going to go to questions from the Chamber.
Moving a little closer to candidates in these thick months.
Will logistical change here, Stacy?
It's like looking at an owl.
You are looking at an owl. Is that a little better? No, I'm just trying to make sure I don't pull one. Hopefully that will do it.
All right. Thank you for your indulgence on that. Again, for people tuning in, you're at the Tahoe Chamber Candidates Forum for Douglas County District 4 Commission seat. And we have with us incumbent Wes Rice, candidate Natalie Yanis, and candidate Janet Murphy. So we're going to go to questions now from the Chamber. And again, we've called these from conversations with people in the Tahoe Township, people throughout the county, going to last week's Commissioner, the Commissioner part of the Candidates Forum by the Business Council of Douglas County and the following of the issues that we do here at the Chamber. So the first, Mike and I will rotate the questions and Mr. Glover, our CEO of the Chamber, has the first one.
So we'll start with candidate Yanis first. So two-part question. Part, which you already covered a little bit in your opening statement. The question is, why are you running? And given your campaign platform of one county, what specifically do you think the Commission needs to do differently? And how would you work to change the county's direction?
Thank you. So one of the major issues that I think that we have is land use issues within the county. And that is different between the lake and the valley. So the land use issues that we are experiencing up here consist of having the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency who controls all of the land use within the watershed at the Tahoe Basin because they are basically trying to implement an environmental improvement program to keep erosion control from happening. And well, not keep it from happening, but they're implementing erosion control so that we don't have sediment that's going into a precious waterway. When you go down into the Carson Valley, the issue is the opposite. We have flooding issues down there. There's also been a concern about water issues that are happening and possible lack of water. The Sierra Mountains are a giant aquifer. And so we have water runoff that's going basically down both sides of our county. So I think that that is one of the major issues that I would like to bring forward. As far as if there's anything that unifies us, it's basically water and land use.
Thank you. Candidate Murphy, you ran four years ago. Why are you motivated to run again? And do you have a different approach or platform this time?
No, I believe I still have the same platform. And that is, I am you. And what I mean by that is that I'm a taxpayer. I'm a ratepayer. I live in this county. I would probably say for the same reasons the majority of the people who lived here for, whether it's the township or it's the valley. And so I do have the same, and why am I running? Well, you know, I think Mr. Tashara already heard this, but you know, Abraham Lincoln was one of the greatest presidents and he ran seven times before he got elected and became one of the greatest presidents. I do, I believe in the people. I love the people. I'm dedicated. I'm committed. I've been 30 years at the district and I've been extremely successful at the legislature. I've been successful here in protecting the people and their money and the township. And I would love to do the same down in the valley if given the opportunity. I ask people, please, call me, talk to me. Ask the people that I, that I have, you know, been a public servant for, for all these years up here in the township. We're third generation and I love the area. And I believe I could make everybody happy and love it just as much as I do.
Thank you. Commissioner Rice, what would you list as your main accomplishments over the past four years? And what are your biggest concerns and goals if elected for a second four-year term?
Well, one of my biggest accomplishments is right down the road. I have been standing on the shoulders of some very astute people that predated me. They had the foresight to want to bring this project to fruition. And I have been proud to be a part of that. I have been instrumental in getting, currently getting raises for the people that work for Douglas County. We finally have the wherewithal that we can bring them up where they're on a level par with the surrounding communities. I've been involved in so many things, it's hard to pick out one. I've enjoyed my time on the TRPA, on the governing board, which is a whole different world from where I came from. And I think we've done some very good things there. One of the things that I'm most concerned about now is trying to take care of kale, kale drive. I've for over 30 years been in disrepair. I have people argue with me that it was the people that started those condos down there at the beach that had destroyed that road. And I'm here to tell you that 30 years ago, when I moved here and before that, that road was in disrepair. It was never meant to be what it is. And I think it's incumbent upon us to fix that because Oliver Park came into creation a long time after that road was there. And they do not have the wherewithal to repair that. And I would like to see that taken care of.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Steve. He'll ask the next question.
Thank you, Mike. So earlier this year, the Nevada Tax Commission removed Douglas County as a guaranteed county for supplemental city-county relief tax distribution, but where the county is no longer getting supplemental relief on the revenue side from the state. So that means the county is on its own now in terms of generating the revenue that it needs to provide services and programs and operate throughout the county. The Tahoe South Event Center and State Line will open early next year and will provide a new source of county property tax, sales tax, entertainment tax, and other revenues. So the question is, we'll start with candidate Murphy. Do you see the Event Center as essential to help provide a new source of county revenue? Why or why not?
I think the revenues that it will generate, and I know this is, we had discussed this once before, start and when I was there, is the people coming here and utilizing and the facilities that we have as far and/or the entertainment, other entertainment, like restaurants, hotels, time shares, and I guess a few VHRs. I believe that is where the folks that built the entertainment and the Event Center, that's where they're saying that's where the revenues, so it's going to help other businesses. And that's what's going to generate those revenues as far as spending their money in other businesses in the area, so which of course, they have to pay sales tax dollars, where they have to pay for the gas or gas tax. So this consolidated tax is a multiple of things. It's not just one tax. It's, I sat on that task committee when I was an advisor of the legislature. So it was very complex as far as the breakdown, you know. Or a liquor tax. There's a lot of things that are involved in it. And so what they're trying to say is that they're going to be able to create more tax revenue driven by the Event Centers. So they're going to leave more money here. And basically, that will contribute to the consolidated tax. That's basically, I believe, if that's what you're saying, Mr. Tashara, do I believe that it'll do that? Yes, it's going to do that. For how long? I don't know. My question is, when I signed the beam, remember we had the beam on Friday? When I signed it, you know what I wrote? I didn't write my name. I didn't write anything. You know what I said? "God bless this building in the pocket." That's what I did because I truly want it to be successful. I want every business to be successful, truly. It's on how, you know, during, versus private sector or government sector, you know, how is it all financed? That's what it comes down to. I have nothing against people if they want to build something, if they want to pay for it, like if I want a remodel or, you know. I don't mind. I have to do it out of my own pocket, though. It can't affect any other funding as far as that goes into the pockets or take away from any other services from other people. And I think you understand what I'm saying.
I appreciate the response. Candidate Yanis, the Event Center, do you see that as essential for a new county source of revenue or not?
So the short answer is yes. I do believe that the Event Center is going to drive revenue sales. We're a tourism-based economy here in Tahoe. We don't have factories that make widgets. That's just who we are. That's what Tahoe's always been. The very first people who came to Tahoe were coming here for recreation. So I'm very proud of Douglas County for going out and doing this Event Center on their own. We do on the California side, that was a failed attempt at having a convention center over in the city of South Lake Tahoe a number of years ago with the best intentions, but it just did not work out. And so good on Nevada for, you know, saying, "We're just going to do it on our own here at Douglas County." We passed AB 29, which was the $5 tax on the room revenue per night. And so most of this is going to be funded by visitors. And that's something that I think has lost on a lot of folks. We do have a 20% bond on this capital improvement that will have to be addressed. And there's operations and maintenance that also needs to be addressed in the future with this building. But hopefully, it has a good enough revenue structure going forward that it will bring a lot of money back into the county.
Thank you. Mr. Rice, same question.
Well, let's get back to the original question, which was about the consumption. Well, let's get back to the original question, which was about the consumer tax.
Right.
Douglas County found itself in such a position that we were putting more money in than we were getting back. We made the decision to remove ourselves from the consolidated tax base because our sales taxes in Douglas County have gone higher than ever expected. The, during the pandemic, when, when other places were failing, Douglas County, probably because of what happened here at Lake Tahoe, boom, the $5 a night tax to build the event center, 20% over expectations, 20%. We have, just two weeks ago, I saw an estimate that after everything is paid for every year, the bonding, everything else, it's going to generate in excess of $700,000 to $1,000,003 every year that's going to be going into the county. And those people who believed that the event center was a boondoggle on the citizens of Douglas County are absolutely wrong because it's the people that come to visit Douglas County at Lake Tahoe that are paying for the event center from bottom to top.
Thank you. Mike?
Request is pending with the county commission to approve some $600,000 from the Tahoe-Douglas Transportation District to fulfill a prior commitment from the commission to help fund a new shuttle-based transit service on the south shore. Requested funds can only be spent at Lake Tahoe. Commissioner Rice, we'll start with you. Do you support this request?
Absolutely. One half of 1% of the sales tax has to stay on the hill for transportation. Part of the agreement for building the event center was that we have microtransit. That's what is going to pay for the microtransit. It should be, it, it, it has to be used for transportation, although some on the board seem to think that that means filling streets. And that's not what it was intended for. So I am in favor of it. I have to try to make it happen. I'm getting some resistance from the other commissioners. Unfortunately, there, there are some, and I'm not going to apologize to them for this because they know it's the truth. We don't like anything coming to the lake. And hopefully with, with Sheriff's Health and the cooperation of another commissioner, we're going to make things happen here. Another thing that I've been talking about is kale drive. There are ARPA funds available to fix kale drive. That 1.5% going to transportation should not be used to fix kale drive, especially since the argument is that the people building the condos at the end of the street are the ones that destroyed the street, which couldn't be further than the truth. We need to do everything that we can to fix the entrance to the casino core so that it at least looks like it's passable.
Thank you, Commissioner. Candidate Murphy, if you were a commissioner today, would you support this request?
Well, you know, this microtransit, I know they have 12 months prior to them opening so that they're getting close. So they, I know they need the funding like now. Now, I don't know, you know, I was told by other folks involved in this microtransit. Now, I don't know if these numbers are correct because I have not validated. It's, I'm letting you know that upfront. So I like to do my homework. But from what I heard, the microtransit would be from State Line to Round Hill. And then it is free. And then it would be from State Line to the Y. And then I heard the two entities over, over on the California side, which, you know, if you were to do the mileage, that's seven miles over there, two miles from State Line Round Hill. And they're going to be putting in, putting up $350,000, but they're asking for $500,000 on the Nevada side. So that's in, you know, I look at that as an inequity. I don't, I don't, I don't see that as a being fair. And, and if it is going to, just to, also when, when Commissioner Rice was saying, how about it shouldn't, the money shouldn't apply to Oliver Park, let's call it kale. But if it's going to Round Hill, that would cover that area. So couldn't you take the money and also spend it there? I mean, I, I'd have to look at that and see if that's doable, but, but I just think there's an inequity if there's only going to be two miles on this side, five miles, and they're putting up less money. I don't know. I think that might put out other jobs like Uber. It could put out Lyft. We do have a transit system now, you know, the trolleys, the buses. And so I, I don't know, but I, I believe that is one of the conditions in order for the event center to be built, they have 12 months to get that in place. And of course, the state lands is going to be having their, they're going to be the first ones to be in the event center to have their, you know, soiree.
Thank you for your answer. Candidate Yanish, if you were a commissioner today, would you support this request?
So there's no easy solution for our transit problems. And we have them. It's incredible. So I, where I grew up in Colorado, I was near the old, wherever you go, you could get on a bus there. It just ride around for free. And you do not have to worry about getting in your car. Like you just park. It's incredible. So there has to be an investment if we want it to be competitive in that type of way to be a resort area. At the same time, I have, I don't know how many of you have ridden buses here in Tahoe, but I will do it from time to time. I do like to try to use public transit and you cannot get from State Line to Round Hill. So I have been on the bus before and heard people saying, how do I get over to the beaches on the Nevada side? Or how do I get to a beach? And they're just turned away right away. So there needs to be some sort of investment in our transit system here. And so yes, I would be supportive of that. I would like to look at the funding mechanisms and ensure that it's going to be sustainable because transit is very expensive. And also I think we're talking about two different things here. Fixing kale, as Commissioner Rice said, is that's not a transit issue. That's an infrastructure issue. That's a road problem. So those are apples and oranges. We're talking about two different items when we're discussing these two things. But we need a more walkable community. We need people to be able to get onto some sort of public transit, to be able to get around and not just our locals, but also our visitors.
Thank you for your answer. Steve?
Thank you, Mike. So the next question, talked about infrastructure. So Douglas County has a lengthy list of needed capital improvement projects, including, but not limited to, the construction of a new judicial law enforcement center down in the valley and a contractual obligation to construct part of the Muller Parkway. Yet the county seems to lack a comprehensive plan to plan and construct major capital improvements. So we'll start out with candidate Yanish here. If elected, how would you address the lack of a comprehensive capital improvement financing plan for the county?
Thank you. So I remember going to, I think, a few, the very first of those county commission meetings I went to, they had a spreadsheet of all of the unfunded projects that they wanted to do. And it went on for pages. I just kept flipping through it. And I'm like, when is this going to end? We have all these roads that need to be updated. We have like all these projects that need to happen. And if you looked at the spreadsheet and you went to the right-hand side, there was like a little column, here's the funding that we have for it. Well, there was like four out of, I don't even know, like how many hundreds of columns were on this page. And I thought, well, this is probably an issue. We should address this. So part of the thing that I've done at Kingsbury General Improvement District is ensure that we have a road maintenance plan that goes out for 20 years for infrastructure, also as well as our water system, so that these capital improvements are not lagging over time. So I think that that's something that I would definitely bring forward as far as how to fund it. There's a lot of state and federal funds out there. We've already mentioned ARPA. If you do go to the state of Nevada, you can also get funds there. Of course, every time you take money out, you're going to have to repay that. Nothing is free. So, you know, it's a careful balance, but I think that having a comprehensive plan is incredibly important. And I think I can bring that to the table.
Thank you. Candidate Murphy, same question.
Well, I can just quickly say, look at my track record. I do capital improvements for the Tahoe Township all the time. Been pretty successful. I don't have any debt. I get them all done. There's many people you can go to. You can go to Washington. If you need grant funding to do capital improvements, you can do matching funds. You can go to, there's the different agencies that you can reach out to. Army Corps, she doesn't say Army Corps, that's me on the lake, sorry. Down in the valley, sorry. But yeah, there's many agencies that you can reach out to. There's ENDA, you know, Nevada Department of Environmental Protection. They have grant fund. There's a lot of places that you can go and get the funding. You can reach out to them. And BLM, there's a lot of, I don't know if there's any stiple money still left. But you know, there's, there's other agencies that you go to and you can get out money to grant funding. But I know that, that's always been on the table about the sheriff's department though too. How they're always going to try to review the sheriff's department. And I guess that hasn't come to fruition because I guess it hasn't been done. We're still talking about it. And no, but there are ways you can do capital improvement. And yeah, you're right, the infrastructure needs to be done. And that's what I think. I believe that infrastructure needs to be done first in this valley. It needs to be done before you start doing any urban sprawl or, or any, any continued development. I think you need to look at your, your existing infrastructure and make it strong before you move on.
Thank you. So Commissioner Rice, in, in your several years on the commission and going forward, what needs to be done? What have you helped to do to get the county into position where they can afford some of these vital capital improvements?
Well, first of all, there's been a misconception that we have no financial plan. We do have a financial plan. As a matter of fact, the board is going to approve the purchase of the land at our next meeting to build the new law enforcement building. We are getting 17 acres. And we are doing that in conjunction with Park and the cattle company. And they are donating part of that land to the county. As far as Muller Parkway, the funding is available. What we are working on is the last part of the right of way. We have the funds to build it. We have been planning building it for, well, longer than I've been on the board. This Muller Parkway has been going up for 20 years. And hopefully this board will get it done. It's happening now. And as far as infrastructure goes, the town of Minden, the town of Gardinerville, the GID and Indian Hills, the infrastructure is there. It's functioning. It's ready for growth. And those are the areas in the towns where they're, they're asking for growth. They have their own plans. And it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's the county's duty to help them do what they need to do, what they want to do. And expand in ways that are smart so that we do not ruin the royal, the rural character of Douglas County. And that is happening. And there are many that are on the board that are doing our damnedest to make sure that it's, it happens so that we have smart growth, that we can somehow get workforce housing and yet not destroy the character of the county.
Thank you, sir. Mike?
Candidate Murphy will be the first to answer this, but I'll give you a background. Businesses throughout Douglas County, including the county itself, are struggling to find an adequate number of employees to properly staff their operations. The lack of affordable housing in Douglas County is cited by many sources. At last week's candidate forum in the valley, you said yourself, you were facing an affordable housing challenge as you went to hire staff at the Tahoe-Douglas District. As a commissioner, what would you do to address the acute need for affordable housing for roads?
Don't get rid of the VHRs and make her, turn them into full-time. I even asked the management people that manage it down in the valley at a county commissioner meeting when they took a little break. And I said, on a true story, Mark Gardner, Commissioner Gardner, excuse me, was there. And I said, hey, you know, why can't we negotiate compromise and turn some of these VHRs that you have listed and maybe turn it full-time rentals? Because we're having some really employee, you know, housing issues. And with gas prices, they just can't keep commuting up the hill. And he goes, we can't do that. We'd make no money. Honest, true stories, what he said, first thing out of his mouth. And I go, oh, okay. So that's when I tapped Mark and I said, you need to talk to this guy. And I, and I, and that's what I go back to say. It's all to do with greed, 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 greed. And greed is going to be our demise, you know. I, I truly believe that. We need to work together, you know, we're all a pyramid. And you gotta, you gotta make the foundation, you know, the bottom of the pyramid is strong. Otherwise, you're going to crumble. And that's a fact. I truly believe that. It takes a team, you know. And, and I believe that what you have, what, what we need to do about the housing to, is, is also limit that. Maybe, I'm not saying you can't have VHRs at all. I mean, we do have time shares. We do have hotels. But they're in certain areas. They're sitting in corridor areas. And I think that's where they belong. I don't think they belong within people that are living in a residential area because a home is your house, is where you're supposed to feel safe. And I do believe, I do have a rental and it's a full-time rental. And I remember somebody approached me and goes, well, you don't believe in capitalism. I go, let me tell you, there's a difference. There's actual definition between greed and capitalism, okay? Greed is excessive profit, especially if it doesn't go back in the community. And a lot of these are owned by people that don't even live here. So, and I would like to filter everything out and, you know, put it in a certain area. That's why, that's why we have zoning. That's why you have the constitution. Those are the things that we follow. Those are the policies. We're supposed to set policies. That's what commissioners do. That's what officials do, set policies. I'm not going to minutes. Sorry.
Thank you. Candidate Yanish, if elected, what approach would you take to effectively address affordable and attainable?
Well, there is absolutely no easy answer to that question. In Lake Tahoe, we have development rights here. So the districts that I would be representing, well, I'd be representing the entire county, but the district up here in the lake, we have residential units of use. So you have to have one of those to build a unit. So we have a very finite resource there. And it's not easy. It's very expensive for a developer to come to try to build housing because they have to pay mitigation fees. They have to pay for development rights. The cost of construction was just skyrocketed recently, but it was always very expensive. So there's absolutely no easy answer to that. I've heard people say, we'll just do infill development, which we don't really have an area that we can do that here in Tahoe. But if you're down in the valley, you know, there are some opportunities to do infill development around the city center. So that might be a little bit more of a solution. Definitely looking for federal funding and grant funding and developers who build that type of property and that product. I think it'd be a solution there. Here, there's just no easy answer to it. And, you know, we've had some opportunities where there were some properties that could have possibly been developed for affordable housing up here at the lake and they were not. So the other aspect of it that I wanted to address was that if you get rid of vacation home rentals, any economist will tell you that's not going to make housing more affordable. It's not a teeter totter. It does not work like that. If you get rid of a short-term rental, that's actually not going to create affordable housing because the issue that we're facing is that people can't afford the prices because of the income that they're making.
Thank you. Commissioner Rice, same question.
We have a dirt problem here at Lake Tahoe. We have no dirt to build on. Excuse me. On the, on the Nevada side, we are just about built out. Unfortunately, with the rules of TRPA, the way they have them, there was no way to expand on. While working, I'm, I'm on the TRPA board of governing board, that's what it is. There are so many boards that we're involved in that I don't know. Sometimes you forget whether it's a government
I hear you ask.
What kind of a board. We are working at TRPA with the state of California and with the city of South Lake Tahoe to build affordable housing at Lake Tahoe on the California side. I've had some people say, well, that's, well, that's really good. Throw all the poor people over into California and they don't have to live here in Nevada. That's where the dirt is. And by that, I'm talking ground. I'm not talking bad stuff. Well, that's where the dirt is. And by that, I'm talking ground. I'm not talking bad stuff. With the regulations that they've had, it's been almost impossible to build new affordable housing. Now with California changing the ground rules, TRPA has had to adapt. And we have changed it so that we can now have secondary buildings built on a lot that would accommodate affordable housing. As far as in the valley, I've been working with, uh, a couple of, uh, developers down there. They've already developed a senior housing community right next to the hospital down in the valley. And it's, uh, right next to an assisted living facility, which is right next to the Walmart. So it's a, a perfect place for senior housing. And I think I'm up to it.
Thank you for your answers. Steve?
Thank you, Mike. So, um, after a very long process, including navigating through a lawsuit, Douglas County now has a new vacation home rental ordinance in place. And I will ask each of you, your view of the new ordinance, where you see strengths and where you see, uh, potentially the need for further improvement of the ordinance. And we'll start with you, Commissioner Rice. You've been on the board during this process. What do you see the strengths and or need for improvement?
This has been, uh, one of my service spots for a long time. We had a group of dedicated people on both sides of the issue. And, uh, Mr. Tashara, you, you were part of that, uh, process, I do believe.
As was Ms. Yanis.
They worked for, what, at least two years to bring to the board a comprehensive package that was agreeable to everybody on the board. Win a little, lose a little, but if we got agreement. They had this beautiful package. Great big red bow on it and they brought it to our board. And the first thing we did was rip the damn bow off. Tore the thing apart and got ourselves sued in court. They came up with a beautiful package and some of us on the board have been trying to get the package back to where it was. But we were, were able to, uh, through negotiation with the, with the plaintiffs, uh, we were able to come up with something that was acceptable to both sides. We are now out of federal court. And the ordinance has now been passed. It needs refinement, but it's a start. And we will evolve. We will somehow make that work. We have no VHRs in the valley. The, the ordinance forbids having VHRs in the valley. Only at Lake Tahoe. Some feel that that's not right. Why should they have them at Lake Tahoe and not down in the valley? And then others say, why didn't we have them at all? So that, that, that's another big controversy. Uh, however, uh, if, if in fact we ever do have VHRs in the valley, I firmly believe that we should be able to get the rules in place at the lake that work before we spread out. Uh, that, I don't, I don't think that's, uh, a very good idea to just open the floodgates into the valley.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Yanis?
So I was on the vacation home rental task force, as was Mr. Tashara for, it was like a year and a half. We spent a lot of time working out a lot of the policies, uh, that we had brought forward that we were hoping would be incorporated into the ordinance. And I do agree with Commissioner Rice that it didn't go very well with the county commissioners. They did not accept it and did put them in some hot water with the, the lawsuit. So specifically speaking to the ordinance as it stands, I don't care if you are staying at a house for one day or a hundred years. Everyone should be complying with nuisance ordinances. And so enforcement has been the issue. And that's why it's such a decisive issue within communities, not just here in Douglas County, but all over the United States. So, uh, basically enforcement was the key. It didn't happen. Uh, we saw what happened in the city of South Lake Tahoe. They basically banned them. Now you've got inequitable property rights where some people can have a vacation home rental, some people can't. Uh, and that's happening in Douglas County now as well because we've created a finite resource as a commodity, which is limiting the amount of VHRs that you can have. So some people have private property rights and some people don't, depending upon, you know, how many vacation rental permits are available. As far as, uh, including the valley, I felt that it was inequitable to not allow people to short-term rent their properties in the valley. Because there again, you're giving some people, uh, the ability to garner investment from their property where others are not able to do that. In addition to that, I am a firm believer in private property rights and quiet enjoyment is one of the private property rights that is key, as well as being able to garner invest, uh, income from your investment. And so, uh, that quiet enjoyment is all about enforcing ordinances.
Hey, candidate Murphy, your response to the same question?
My hot topic. Well, okay. Well, first I'll say what's good is they have high fines. I like the high fines. Okay, they're going to pay the price if you don't, you know, you're going to pay the paper. But what I dislike about it is the hypocrisy that surrounds it all, which there's hypocrisy in politics of, you know, like in general. And my issue is, is that one is a business and, uh, you know, there's other, uh, types of building timeshares. They probably like to build in other areas also, but they can't because they're what? Because they have to build in a certain area. So what's the difference than with a VHR? Why are they allowed to go anywhere when there's certain types of businesses are, that need to be within the a certain zoning area, if you want to call it that? Um, they're not allowed to, to build. So, so what about their rights? So that's what I'm saying about the hypocriticalness that's, that's going on here, number one. Number two, about the housing situation, there is a lot of people that could afford to, uh, rent these places if they were a full-time rental. That's very true. Um, I know that because I'm in the rental business, so I know they can afford it. And, uh, number three, you know, um, when something doesn't work, it's like you can't even get code enforcers to stay at the job because they don't even want to do the job. It's looking so scary because they're afraid of the people. Sometimes they're to approach them. You know, so you can't even, I'm seeing, I bet you Douglas County needs code enforcers right now. I bet they're still looking for them. Um, but when you, but when something's not working and you're constantly having problems, you keep kicking the can down the road. And then you go through lawsuits and everything. Why? So what you do is you just, okay, we're going to segregate it. Go here, you go here, just like these other businesses. And, and you'll be done with it. If you just, you gotta step up to the plate. Sometimes, uh, you know, it's, you gotta just, and that's how I am. I'm sorry, but, uh, maybe that's why some people say, oh, you're a lot like Trump. You're just going to say it like it is and, and, and then, and then stand your ground. I'm steadfast. I'm sorry. But I think that, um, sometimes there is no compromise, black and white.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, candidate Yanis, she'll ask, answer this question first. Uh, there's a feeling in some circles that there is out of control growth in Douglas County, particularly in the Ca- Carson Valley. Recently, this belief triggered the county commission to authorize a major study, about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to have the U.S. Geological Survey evaluate Carson Valley water aquifers to gain a better understanding of using those aquifers as a source of water. What is your level of understanding of these issues and how should the county commission handle growth and water issues going forward? Keeping in mind that there is a growth management ordinance in the county.
Thank you. So wa- water is something that is near and dear to my heart. And as I was saying before, our mountains are a giant aquifer, so we have no lack of groundwater down in the valley. Um, I do agree that we should have had USGS to be surveyed because it gives us some data points so that we actually see where aquifers are at. Uh, I have studied a lot of this. I follow along. I grew up in Colorado where water rates are a huge issue. Uh, so I definitely understand where the concern is. When you have ag land and you're basically subdividing and creating it into single-family residences, you don't have the infrastructure to support that. We do have quite a few homes and residences that are on wells down in the Carson Valley. So, uh, that is an issue as well. Uh, so I do agree that we did need that data. I think that it's going to be outdated as soon as we get it. Because of the changing climate, um, and depends upon, you know, the recharge that's coming off of the mountain, uh, every year. So it's always good to have those data sets. I think it's adaptive, adaptive management. Uh, I think that's important is to always kind of assess where you're at and then move forward from there. Infrastructure is always going to be an issue. It's not just having enough water to support the resident, residential areas and commercial areas as well. But also, uh, the, you know, uh, we have a septic issue that's happening down in the valley now as well. So there's a lot of testing that's going on for nitrates. Uh, and that is something that, having those data points are valuable information for creating policies regarding water and land use. Here at the lake, I can tell you, Kingsbury General Improvement District, we pull water from Lake Tahoe. So that's under the, uh, TROA or Truckee River Operating Agreement. And there are concerns about, uh, things that are going on with the lake and how our water rights are going to be affected with that, uh, especially because of the Tahoe Keys are now introducing our resides into Lake Tahoe. So that's one of the things that I'm monitoring as well. So, uh, I can talk to you backwards and forwards all about water issues. But yes, definitely my wheelhouse and that's, uh, probably one of my major concerns for Douglas County is how to best manage that water resource.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Murphy, same question.
Well, my background is, uh, infrastructure and, uh, utilities. So, uh, my vast knowledge, um, it's pretty good. And, uh, you do have some issues down there and down in the valley. And, uh, when I hear a drought, like I said at the last debate, that gets me worried when I talk to Chad about the water. Says, yeah, there's an issue. So you don't want to do urban sprawl without investigating and having, you know, your, your, uh, resources spent to a degree, you know? It's not only the resource, but it's also the, the physical infrastructure that carries it too. There's all those things that come into play. Um, you also have to, you know, you know, I know you're getting a study from USGS and, uh, and I know they've been looking at it for years. Ed James, they had him in the Conservation District. They had him look at it. Um, he had more in adult water issues back in the day. There's always been water issues down there. You wouldn't think so because you're in a flood plain, right? You know? But, uh, but there is because of the aquifers. And, and not only that, it's not about nitrates. It's also about phosphorus. There's a lot of things that you have to, that goes into, into water. I mean, that's what I do. That's, my husband is licensed in California, Nevada for everything. So that's how I know and that's why I have a vast knowledge of, of all of the systems and how it works in the infrastructure. And that is your integral part of building anything or surviving in, in, uh, anywhere. I don't care if it's urban, if it's rural, it doesn't matter. Your infrastructure, like I said earlier, has to be, has to be very strong before you move on. Um, you, you had arsenic, if you remember, when in your wells. That wasn't a big problem. The Gardnerville ranches had a huge water problem. They're like, oh my God, how are they going to build those four hundred homes where you're in our wells, you know, run dry? It's like, you know, people keep digging down deeper and deeper. You can only dig down so deep and then you're stealing from the other guy. There's, I can, there's so many variables that, uh, people don't know, but I do. And, and that's the truth. I'm just being honest. So, and that's what I'd like to investigate first because you have to make, you gotta start there first. Make it strong before you move on.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Rice, your answer please.
Well, first of all, we have a two percent gap on growth. We have the pool of unused building rights that have only been dipped into a couple of times and I believe it was twenty-three houses. People say that we just approved, uh, two thousand five hundred homes to be built on park land in exchange for the Sleeping Elephant Ranch down in the TRD. The truth of the matter is, certain groups don't want to look at this. They could have built, uh, over thirty-seven hundred homes and we limited the amount of growth that they can have by doing so. And then transferring the rights to build from that property down to, uh, Sleeping Elephant where they do not need more wells. They do not need more septics because they have the lack of municipal water and no sewers down there. So that is protecting that aquifer that is being stressed. As far as the facilities in, in the rest of Douglas County, the towns of Minden, Gardnerville and GID in Fish Springs are so well-maintained and so well-operated that they have room for growth that is, we will never, ever get to, nor should we. But the infrastructure is there. They are well-run. There's plenty of water in. One of the reasons why we approved the USGS study was because of the naysayers saying that we're running out of water. They have no idea whether or not we're running out of water because we don't know how much water is down there. So now we're going to know, one way or the other. And, uh, the responsible thing is if there's not enough water, then we'll stop building. If there is enough water, we can build wisely. And besides the fact that the aquifers are recharged by our, uh, our ranches and farmers down there, they, they do flood irrigation and that water instead of evaporating because it's, uh, being squirted all over the air and, uh, and their, their rainbirds uh, that regenerates, replenishes the aquifer by the way they are now watering their, their plants and their fields.
Thank you. Steve?
Hey, we have one more chamber question and then we have a couple that have come in from the audience. We'll ask you those as well. Um, so the Tahoe Township of Douglas County has about nine percent of the county's resident population. But it generates about forty percent, maybe a little over, of the county revenue. Last year, the commission majority voted to no longer hold commission meetings at Lake Tahoe, which were here in this room. Would you support a return to meeting, commission meetings, at least a couple of times a year at the lake? And why or why not? We'll start off with Commissioner Rice.
I thought that and lost. We would have one meeting in the valley, one meeting in the lake. We do generate forty percent of the revenues that Douglas County uses with just a small percentage of the population. Okay, maybe it makes sense to, uh, reduce the number of meetings up here. Uh, I firmly believe when we have an issue that is involving the lake, the meeting should be at the lake. And there are times when, uh, the meetings are primarily about South County. Okay, maybe we should have a meeting down in the South County. But one of the arguments against having the meetings at the lake were those of, to live in the South County have to drive all the way into Minden to go to a meeting. Why shouldn't the people at the lake drive all the way down to the meeting to go, to go to their meeting also? Which is, don't get me started on that. And, uh, I feel that, uh, we, when, when events, when the meeting events concern the lake, we should have the meetings at the lake.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Candidate Yanis, your view of meetings at the lake or no?
Yeah, uh, absolutely. I think that we should have meetings at the lake. And I do agree that it could be cut down to perhaps having more down in the valley and moving them around to South County more. I think government should be local. It should be coming to the people. It should be accessible. So.
We apologize for the technical delay, but, uh, candidate Yanis was finishing her comments about meetings at the about meetings at the lake.
Yes, so sure, yes, we should have some meetings at the lake, and the other thing that I wanted to mention is that we actually used to have a Douglas County meeting, that was Jermaine County meeting with Elder River County and the City Council, and that has not happened for a number of years. I believe there was only a couple of them since I've been here for 20 years, and I think that it's really important to be able to meet with people who are on the other side of the state line as well. So I would like to see that come back as well.
Thank you. Kennedy Murphy, your thoughts, meetings at the lake, or no?
I love meetings at the lake. I love the involvement of the township. I mean, if you look at it, you know, I mean, I look at numbers, so, I mean, when you, when you pose the question, didn't you say it was 40%?
Yes.
Of how much of, I mean, that's a pretty big piece of the pie, so I look at it that way, absolutely, why not? You should. I mean, if we're 40% of the township, you need to be at the lake, you know? And of course, you know, toll paths, if you need to go to toll paths, if they do have issues, and if that's what they choose to do, ask the folks. I always say, ask the folks, see what they like. If that's what they, they say, you know what, can you have the meeting down here since that's going to affect us? I think that's great, you know? I just think, and I think anything that's gonna affect any general area, it should be the general area that votes, you know? Like VHRs, instead of the county and of the ordinance, it's a county at whole, but the ordinance says they don't have them down there, so why isn't it just the township voting?
Thank you. So we have a couple of questions that have come in from the audience. The first one is, I think this was quite widely reported in the press, so people should be aware of it, but there was a case up here on Kingsbury Grade where a synagogue wanted to have some additional parking so they could actually have services at the synagogue. They went to the planning commission, they got a unanimous approval, a recommendation from the planning commission for their special use permit. It went to the Board of County Commissioners and was denied on a split vote. Then some circumstances arose whereby there was a rehearing, and it came back to the county commission, and there was a unanimous vote to approve the special use permit. So the question here is, we'll start with you, candidate Yanis. If you had been on the commission, what would have been your vote?
Oh, I'm on the hot seat for this one, for sure. So, just to give you a little bit more background about that, so Kingsbury General Improvement District, we actually have a lease on that property, and so we are in that property. So I did go to the county commission and did testify, I tried to be as factual as possible about this parking situation. You know, I was advocating on behalf of my constituents because that's who I answer to, and it was probably not popular with a lot of our community members. I am the first one to say yes to things that are community-minded. However, we do have a parking situation and problem with that property. So I testified, if I had had to vote for it, I do feel that the parking study was flawed, and that would be my basis for going against the planning commission. The planning commission that we have is actually very good in Douglas County. They are very technically-minded, they go through everything with a fine-tooth comb, and then they send it up to the Douglas County Commission. So my thoughts are, yes, I want to support them, but at the same time, I think that the information that you received in the first place was incorrect. I did speak with the rabbi, we had a good conversation. We're still going to be tenants there for a number of years, so we want to make it work. I'm actually going to the Main Street program next month, or next week, actually. So there's a Main Street program that I would like to propose for the Kingsbury General Improvement District area, so that's our commercial corridor here, just off of SR207. And we did talk about trying to find some sort of solution for the parking there, making it more walkable. So, yes, controversial, but I would have voted against it.
Thank you. Candidate Murphy, if you had been on the county commission, how would you have voted on the issue?
Well, I would have, I would have got the legal aspect of it first, and then it would have been a done deal, because as far as to my knowledge, that's basically what happened. It came up that it was legally, they had the right, and so, and that would have been a done deal. If there's something legal that's pretty black and white, then I argue about it, and that's, as a lead, to my knowledge, that's what happened.
Very good, thank you, appreciate your answer. Another question here from the audience, that's having to do with the importance of tourism to the county. And if you, as a candidate or a commissioner, support tourism, what do you think the role of the county commission is with regard to understanding tourism and supporting it county-wide? So we'll start with, start with Commissioner Rice.
Well, first of all, the county doesn't have a whole lot of say in tourism. We could probably hamper the devil out of it if we wanted to do that, but that would not be our best interest. That's why we have the Lake Tahoe Mission Authority, that's why we have the Tahoe Douglas Mission Authority, that's why we have a visitor authority in the valley to promote tourism. That's what they do. They do a very good job of, I might add, and encourage tourism, but there are so many things that are off the hill that a lot of people don't even realize are there, and the fishing, the availability of hiking trails, all of that. And I don't think it's the commission's business to try to go in and tell the visitors authorities what they ought to be doing with their diamond money.
Thank you. Well, no, appreciate it. Kennedy Yanis, tourism and the county's role?
I do believe that the county can, the Douglas County Commissioners are here to set policy and to guide what happens within the county. Tourism is an incredible part of our community and the way that we actually fund a lot of our infrastructure and our resources here. So I do agree that I wouldn't like to interfere with the LTBA or any other local business group. At the same time, Douglas County has a community development department, and part of their role is to deal with recreation and tourism. So there are ways that the county can coordinate that with staff, as well as being a partner with other stakeholders and collaboratively working to see how we can make things more business-friendly within the community.
Great, thank you. Candidate Murphy?
I agree with Commissioner Rice. I mean, we already have the entities to already deal with the terrorism that we need here, but you need a collaborated effort as far as, you know, hey, we get in a tourism, can the infrastructure support it, you know, things of that nature. So you work together, but we already have entities that do with that, just like the chamber, you know, they deal with the businesses. That's what those individual entities are supposed to do, you know? Let them, you know, they're in charge of their own.
Okay, appreciate all your answers, and those were the questions that we had received from, from members of the audience, both virtual and otherwise. And so we've come to the time of the program now, we're gonna ask you each to give some closing comments. If you have a website or anything like that that you can mention with people to go and learn more about you, this would be a good time to mention it. So we'll start with candidate Murphy, go to candidate Yanis, and end up with Commissioner Rice, one minute.
One minute, oh my God, okay. Where's the camera? I am you. I'm you. I'm all of you. I am the parent, I'm a spouse, I'm a sibling, I'm a descendant, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a volunteer, and I'm not perfect. I'm not perfect. And don't compare me to the Almighty. You can compare me to my competition. That's all I can tell you. I have a track record, call me, my phone number's on my card, call me. I believe in transparency through and through. I do my homework, down to the detail. Ask anybody that in my district, and I'm sure they'll, they'll back me. Those are my sponsors, I guess, if you want to call them, or endorsements are the people that have seen my work, that I've done. I wouldn't keep running if I didn't believe in the Tahoe Township and the county, because I love it, I want to keep it that way. And first, the greatest gift we have is life. The second greatest gift we have is choice. And you have a choice, and I hope I'm your choice.
Thank you, thank you very much. Kennedy Yanis?
So I just want to thank everybody who is watching, so it's great that we have people who are interested in voting. Douglas County has a great turnout when it comes to voter participation, so that's why I'm excited to live here. So help to have your vote. My name is Natalie Yanish, N-Y-A-N-I-S-H, and you can find me at nataliyanish.com. My cell phone number is on there as well, so please feel free to call me if you have any issues or anything that you would like to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rice?
Yes, sir. I forgot to mention at the beginning, I was with the Round Hill General Improvement District for 15 years, thanks to being appointed mid-term. I sometimes forget to mention that, I know water. Anyway, my wife and I have been married for 41 years, we've been knee-deep into politics ever since we moved to Nevada. Been the Rural Caucus Chairman for about 18 years now, and my wife is the State Renovations Chair, and the only time I outrank her is when we're having a Rural Caucus meeting, that's just my secretary. I do want to say that I am very proud to say that I've been endorsed by Congressman Mark Amity, State Senator James Suttermeyer, Assemblyman Tim Wheeler, former Lieutenant Governor Brian Corelechi, Nevada Republican State Chair Michael McDonald, Sheriff then, Cole Coverley, I always, I always say it wrong, my wife corrects me all the time, Douglas County Constable Paul Pilbert, the Douglas County Sheriff's Association, Eastward Fire Professional Firefighters Association, and South Tahoe Lines of Resorts. Very, very thankful that they support me and they believe in me. I hope that I can garner your vote, because this will all be over June the 14th. Come on, come on, June 15th. And thank you for doing this.
I just have one thing, if you don't mind, because I really strongly want to support this, I know there's not a lot of people here in the audience, but I'm on the Tahoe-Douglas Protection Fire District, and there's a huge thing going on right now. And I have the pamphlets, it's, we're trying to get a couple helicopters up here in the Tahoe Township, so I'm urging you, everybody, please contact the fire department up here, and any way that you can help, I mean, those helicopters would make a huge difference in this basin, and it's just not for the township, it's going to be for the whole entire lake as well as the valley. So I have the information, I have the brochures, please, I'm asking you, just reach out to the Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District up here at the township, so please, thank you, call your, call the chief, anybody you want. Call me, I'll give you one, it's really good, we need to get this done.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy, appreciate it. On behalf of the chamber, we want to thank all of you. It takes a lot of courage to step up and, yes, funds for campaigns, but, you know, it takes a lot of courage to be an elected official these days, to run for office, so we appreciate the fact that you have come forward. We wish you all the best in this coming race, and, you know, often here in Douglas County, because it's predominantly a Republican registration, the primary may establish a result, that's may or may not be the case this time, but I think that's, by way of saying that, is to encourage people to vote, to participate, to take a role in electing your county commissioners. Want to thank again Charlotte Hales for coming tonight, District Two Supervisor-to-be, and again, thank all of you and all of you who are participating. We will push out information as to where you can see this program on the various chamber channels, we'll let you know, so people can view if they weren't able to be with us here in person or on the virtual platform this evening. Want to thank our CEO, Mike Glover, Stacy Ellison, and Elprax, who is at another event this evening, but also part of our chamber team who helped put this program together, so thank you all very much, and best wishes, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.